All right, counselors, we will go ahead and get started. I'll still try to get on this camera while we get started. And Tom is also having camera problems, so it's just Counselor Govan is the only one showing her beautiful face right now. Welcome, Counselor Hurst, Counselor Letterman, and Counselor Govan to the ARPA, the Finance ARPA Fund Updates Meeting. I think I said that in the right order, Finance Subcommittee ARPA Funds Update Meeting. So we'll get started. Tom, if you could just start with, like, how many applications we got in each category? We'll just start there.
Sure. Yeah, I think I can probably break that down for you, as best as what I have into the system so far. So we have a total of 215 applications that are in the door that have been processed. There are an additional, I would say, I'll ballpark it at 45 applications that are yet to get into the official spreadsheet, but are being kind of formatted and going through the intake process. So probably have a total of just over 250 applications that have been taken in the door or submitted by people. They break down with, again, these are the 215 that are in the system so far. Breaks down as 84 in the small business category, 57 in the new business category, 34 within the nonprofit category, 27 within the household category, and 11 within the senior category, and two within the economic development slash job creation category.
All right, so 57 new business. What was after that?
There were 27, or excuse me, new business 57, nonprofit 34, and households comprised 27. Senior applications were 11, and then economic development slash job creation was two. I would say of the 45 to 50 that we have that are making their way into the system at the moment, I would say the breakdown is primarily small business, new business, households, and seniors.
Okay. Well, seniors is better because I think last time it was two or something like that.
Yeah, right. You're very, very correct, Counselor. That's a good observation. I'm happy with that number, though. They're still the lowest category, and we all are probably aware because we've been receiving, you know, requests for assistance primarily within that category, for sure, and assistance that requires a little bit more than just a couple of questions being answered. So, you know, that's something we're really conscious of at the moment, trying to schedule some events. You know, we have an event coming up at the Senior Center. I think Director Swan is, you know, making some headway with getting us a firm date for this month, and we should be promoting that event very shortly. I don't have the exact detail on the day, so I'm not gonna incorrectly say it, but it should be within the next two weeks or so, and that'll be the first event of a few that we're gonna do. Really just, excuse me, reaching out directly to seniors. So there'll be events for them as well.
So when you say you're gonna hold more, you mean you're gonna hold more events just for seniors? Or overall?
Yeah, I think the first one's gonna be, the first one's gonna be, well, both, right? The first one's gonna be at the Senior Center, and they're organizing, you know, we're organizing just to try to get some support staff there and to really be able to block out a number of hours during the day to have this event for seniors, and then I think what we will do is have some follow-up events as well. I don't think one event's gonna be sufficient. My kind of thought there was that we're gonna be doing this over a period of quite a few months, definitely leading into the summer. So it'll be, it'll be a proactive effort to try to get some real direct assistance to people who just, you know, they need some clarity. They'll, you know, oftentimes need a few walkthroughs of what you're sort of looking for before you get, you get sort of where you want to go. So that's something that just takes a little more time, and we were looking at it as a group and saying, it makes a lot of sense for, you know, a few reasons. One, administratively, you know, not having to field, you know, requests separately from a group that clearly has a high demand, and maybe we get to hit people who can't even, you know, contact us and aren't even sure how to access it, and all they know is there's an event coming up at the Senior Center, and they're gonna go, you know, and that might be, it's, I think it's gonna be hopefully an effective way to reach more people.
Okay. You all hear me? Very lightly. So still lightly, Counselor?
No, it's good.
I can, yeah, now you're better.
I'm gonna leave this one. All right, so I can't even start the video. Okay. I don't know. It might freeze and stuff, guys, but at least I'm on. Okay. Sorry about the technical difficulties. Also, that's what my thought process was. Is there any information you just want to go over overall, and then we'll formulate our questions from there? Or did you want to?
I mean, it might be better just to field, it might be better to field questions. I mean, I have the statistical data as far as it's, as far as it is up to date. My gosh, I want to say probably as of like mid-last week, because I mean, it's difficult to keep updating day-to-day. Like, for example, like I said, there's a, this, at any given moment, there's probably about 30 to 40 that are coming in the door that quite haven't gotten in there, so we don't know what they are, you know. I don't know if they're, what category they are, what demographic information or the numbers they're looking for, stuff like that. It's really just more, you know, intaking, almost like a postal service thing where you just sort of categorize them correctly and then get them into a database.
And how are you guys doing with the outreach?
I mean, outreach is, I guess, like a daily effort. You know, people are oftentimes looking for some basic information so you can get a bunch of questions answered quickly, but then some people like I was referencing really need more clarity, and you have to sort of, you know, either call them on the phone or schedule a meeting for them to come in. I've been sort of making a habit of just taking mornings on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays and having a series of meetings every one of those days, just devoted to assisting people who have applied, whose applications need improvement, you know, and I think, you know, our outreach efforts are reaching people, but not as many as we'd like to, you know, and I think I've probably spoken to this before, but, you know, there's an urgent need to just have more staffing, and I think every department feels it, so I won't just kind of beat the same drum everybody is. But, you know, we'd be able to do more outreach if we had more people, and I think, you know, a lot of people are being patient, and that's great, and I've felt the frustration of many people too, and I, I share their frustration on many fronts, you know, just trying to, you know, do our best to qualify as many people as quickly as we can.
I see your hand, Counselor Letterman, but I just have a couple more questions. Tom, do you know what, how much we have left in ARPA funds? Like, do you have, I know TJ said that there'll be a breakdown next time? Because they weren't able to make it, but do you have?
I don't think it's been changed at all at this point. I had, there hasn't been anything that's changed out of the RP expenditure pile. I know there's a number of awards that are just about to get to the finish line, but as of right now, there's nothing different from the last time as far as money that's been committed. I'm trying to think programmatically, there's nothing that has been, that hasn't been announced previously that's already known, at least to my knowledge.
So it's still $12 million left, though, right? Like $12 million left, though, because we encumbered.
I thought you said $12 million left. I thought you said $12 million left. I was like, I hope it's less. Yeah, right. So there's, there's the Historic Adaptive Reuse Program out of Economic Development, and there is the Neighborhood Recovery Relief Fund, or however, I forget the acronym they have for it, out of EchoDev as well. That's correct.
So, so you don't have any other financial information with you?
No, I mean, I have the, it's the same information as it has been, right? So the expenditure is the same as the last time I think we submitted our report. I think, I don't know what category that $12 million program was in, was in the last sheet report. I don't know if it was in their obligations or expenses. Or if it wasn't disclosed. Oh, maybe it wasn't even in that report. Oh, no, that's, yeah, well, so the $12 million program is something that, it's something out of Tim Sheehan's shop out of EchoDev, and my understanding of what they're doing with the program is they looked at one of the points of emphasis in the final rule, which discusses the abilities of cities and towns to kind of do concentrated neighborhood projects. And we sort of looked at that, and, you know, during our public outreach, during what, August and September, you know, into October, we got, as I've probably said to you guys before, sorry to repeat myself, but there were a lot of the same concerns, you know, neighborhood to neighborhood, and a lot of the projects that were there were ones that we were worried under the current rule that we weren't gonna be able to spend money on, and it was, you know, how are we gonna focus money directly here? How do we best, like, create a program that can do that? And it wasn't really, it was a very gray area, and it was difficult to figure that out, and I think the final rule was a little, much more generous in that category. And Tim, in his shop, looked at it and said, well, here's our opportunity to just funnel every one of these neighborhood programs, you know, neighborhood improvement projects through one program, and we're gonna create it through economic development instead of having it be a part of, you know, the ARPA program. It'll be funded through ARPA money, but it'll be an economic development program. And, you know, I, to a certain extent, I think that makes sense for the administrative part of it. I was, you know, part of their developing of their application process, although a lot of that lifting was done by Tina Quagliato and Tim Sheehan and their, and their group, and they did a very nice job of putting together, I think, what are pretty user-friendly applications that are streamlined online, something we are working towards with the RFPs as well, but something that they've sort of rolled out the gate for that program. So, you know, it's a newer program. I would, I defer to Tim as to some of the details of what exactly they're looking for to qualify, but my understanding is a lot of those projects are coming exactly from the list that we sort of, you know, created through the public outreach information gathering that we had done during the fall and the summer.
Counselor Letterman?
Thanks, Counselor Whitfield. I just wanted to get in the queue. I was, I was happy to wait. But I had a couple of questions on, for Tom. The first being, Tom, I have not seen any advertising. I've heard from others that there is, are TV commercials running. I do not watch live television, and I think that a lot of people in my age demographic do not watch live television. We consume media in a lot of other ways, and I haven't seen any ads on any social media platform, on YouTube, in any of the ways that I think a demographic that's important to reach is not being reached. So, other than the contract with Western Mass News or with Channel 40 or that you reported on last time, have any more dollars been put into advertising the application process?
Yeah, I know the, you touched on the social media aspect. I know there's some work going on, and, you know, the mayor's office, I think, assisting us with that as well, with, you know, developing more of a comprehensive and concentrated social media campaign. And I know that, you know, Director Plant has had a number of conversations with, you know, looking to advance that particular form of advertising. We certainly have radio advertisements that are, you know, progressing their way to completion. That front's moving frustratingly slow, but as you correctly said, Counselor, we have some television medium advertising that's going out. We've done some periodical advertising. I'd like to do some more periodical advertising. I've been advocating for that, and I hope that that gets done as well. You know, outreach is an ongoing thing, Counselor. You're right. We want to try to hit as many of the groups that were, you know, heavily impacted by the pandemic as possible, and that's, you know, the younger demographic is certainly one of those groups, so I fully understand.
Okay. The second question I had was relative to if there's been progress on the FAQ sheet for each category, because I think people are still asking me, what is really eligible to be a five-four in each category? So has that language been developed?
Yeah, the FAQ expansion is something that's ongoing. To be honest, Counselor, there's a whole lot of work just taking the intake of the proposals that we're getting and really trying to qualify and get people the kind of technical assistance that they're looking for. You know, there's certainly questions that come in the door that, you know, Director Swan and I are handling, you know, through back and forth with emails and phone calls and in-person meetings. So, you know, I think that the FAQs and the updating of the website, they're very important and things that are going to get done. But I agree, it's an update that's probably overdue at this point.
Okay. Last question. The new neighborhood fund. Can that be used for infrastructure?
You're saying this is the same one we were just discussing, the EchoDev one?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I believe, I believe you can use it for improvement of neighborhoods in, and that's a very broad definition, the way that they discussed it under the final rule. My understanding of it is that you can use it for capital, including certain infrastructure to make areas more, I think, more walkable and to improve public space. You know, if you read through ARPA, you see the infrastructure sort of this, this thing that's allowed very, you know, limited, you know, in limited capacities, I think because they're anticipating this other legislation's gonna, you know, cover that, and they're not, they're not trying to open a wide door for, for unlimited and unfettered infrastructure spending. But the way I interpret the rules is that you could use it for certain infrastructure within the neighborhood program, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm really waiting to see more progress on the advertising through both culturally competent and expanded platforms.
Thank you, Counselor. And I, and I wanted to add that when these new programs come out, we should do more to educate the community on how they work, because if, if Counselor Hurst and I didn't ask, ask Tim Sheehan about the Build Back Springfield program, we wouldn't even know how it worked. It wasn't designed for the Black and Brown community, and that's what the ARPA funds should be used for, because it only pays for 50% of acquisition. I'm not gonna say it wasn't, but predominantly, some Black folks in the Black and Brown community probably won't be ready for the large-scale projects that it's meant for, because it's only 50% acquisition, 50% rehab, but then where's the other 50% gonna come, come from? If you have like a $7 million project, even a $2 million project, like, a lot of folks in the Black and Brown community don't have access to the capital, don't have access to the relationships, don't have access to, just, just may not be in a position to be ready for it, and so when these programs are designed, we need to have people of all demographics in the room talking about this and making these decisions. And it's something that I already told Tim Sheehan, because the decision, based on what I heard, the, this month, based on what I heard, the decision was made by TJ, Tim, and, and one other person, I forgot who it was, Counselor Hurst, if you remember, but that is just not equitable, and we need all folks in the room when we make these decisions on these programs. So I just wanted to say that. Counselor Govan?
Thank you so much, Counselor. So I want to thank Tom for delineating all these different applications that you received. That was great. And I'm looking forward to the neighborhood community meetings. I know I've called Tom and I've called Director Swan, and I have asked about resources for neighborhoods to host, you know, community meeting. The Indianer Citizens Council is actually hosting an informational meeting on March 19th for businesses, for seniors, households. We're inviting everybody to come out. Tom, do you guys have any resources that we could take advantage of to be able to do that, to inform the community? We're actually going to try to help them, you know, have a completed proposal by the end of the meeting, maybe in two weeks after the meeting. So that's something that we really wanted to do because the community is asking for it. I know that you guys said that you were gonna be coming out to the neighborhoods, but I feel like, you know, the advertisement right now, I do see, I watch the news in the morning, and I see Mayor Sarno on TV talking about the ARPA funds. There's not a lot of detail in that, so I don't know if residents realize, you know, that it's for them. And also on the application, there's no address and no phone number. There's nothing on the application for people to reach out to. There's not even an address on where to bring it to. The last time I looked, unless it's changed recently, the last time that I printed an application out for one of the residents, there wasn't an address to bring it to. The only way that I knew that they had to bring it to Capitol Street was because I knew that's where they were supposed to bring it. So those two questions, are there any resources for neighborhoods to host informational meetings from your office? I know you guys are really extended, and that'll bring me to another question after that.
So resources, as in, you know, people to attend the meetings that you guys are having to assist? I think that's definitely something that we've always intended to do and will be doing. So, yes, I think that's, that's certainly something we'd be happy.
Okay, so maybe, thank you.
Definitely.
Okay. I'm not sure if any.
I know the one on the 18th. I know you would reach on. It's definitely on my radar to respond. I Yeah, I think, I think either Director Swan or me, or both, will try to attend that meeting for sure. I mean, let's put it this way. I had it on my calendar already to sort of say, we need somebody at that. So I know you guys are intending to assist in a lot of P. If hopefully I can be there personally to just kind of give clarity when people need to have something more defined, and, you know, as I said kind of earlier, I think that's something we're just gonna do is just have a lot of these events in the public, and I've really been doing that since the time. So, you know, let's, the, the public meetings, and we start to give, you know, more and more assistance, try to help more people.
Okay, that sounds great. And also, the positions that you have open, where are you advertising those positions? Is it just on the city website? You know, because I know that you guys have been needing help for a long time.
Yeah, it's a good point, Counselor. I'm not really, I'm not really involved in the hiring process to the extent that that's, that's really HR's domain, and that's, you know, if, you know, it comes into the finance department, it would be the CFO sort of making those decisions. So I really don't have a whole lot of information on that front, unfortunately.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I needed right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom. Yeah, I don't know where to start. I guess I'll start with a template. Do we have a template for individuals who might need assistance in filling these applications out? Are the RFQs out? RFPs out? Do you have anything that folks can sort of use as a guide? When they go to fill this out? Yeah, like. Merely for the seniors and the households, right? Breaking up, or is it me?
Thank you both for just talking at the same time. So Counselor Hurst, finish your thought, please.
I think Tom's breaking up a little bit.
I'm breaking up. Are you done with your thought, though?
Um.
If there's a template or something?
Yeah, I just want to know if there's a template. I think the last of my thought was that, you know, it's one thing to go in and explain folks, explain to folks how to do it, especially at the senior centers, but the reality is, once folks leave, you know, that information oftentimes is out the window, and so it'd be nice if there was something that they could have to take with them to sort of model how to fill out the application. Just, especially for like the seniors and the households where it shouldn't be that overly cumbersome. No, Tom.
No template either.
I'm sorry. I could, I could hear you. I could definitely hear you, and I just, I didn't want to talk because I was, but can you guys hear me now? Am I clear?
Yes, yes.
Oh, good. Okay. So I'm so sorry. I was trying to, I'm traveling, because I have a board meeting at 5:30 I'm trying to get to, but I'm sorry. It kept switching between my Bluetooth on the car and my phone. Yes, so I definitely, so, okay. Yes, this is a, an idea that I think we've had, we've been talking about for a little bit, and I think, you know, at this stage, the idea is, you know, many people are suggesting, let's put together something of an, almost like an instructional video for people to just access a link and have applications sort of gone through and walked through like a sample source. And doing that in the household and senior categories, like Counselor Hurst very correctly said, is really the ones we see the most demand in. That's something where, you know, the plan is to have this event at the Senior Center when we're holding to do senior application assistance to create through that event, to create a video that shows a kind of start-to-finish way to go through the application. You know, that's something we're hoping we can create and post online and have people be able to refer to, to give them, like you're talking about, this, this walkthrough to be able to point to and not just have a one-time thing where, you know, if you, if you sort of miss a note or something, you're not quite sure what I said or what the answer was, and then you're out of luck.
Yeah, and also, it should just be, there should just be some common language that everybody can sort of put down so that they, you know, and then sort of adjust it accordingly to their particular situation. That, that's all, to make it easier. And, and then I guess my last point, I mean, I feel like we're going over some of the same things we've gone over at multiple meetings. It also seems like you all are trying. It also seems like there are not a lot of resources, that you don't have enough, you know, personnel to get done what it is that you all need to get done. It seems to me that at some point in time, in the very near future, it might make sense to just pause and, you know, and sort of have a restart as to, you know, as to how it is we're going to, to figure the rest of this out. Because right now. No, I was gonna say, it just seems like folks are being pulled in a million different directions, and I just think like, at some point in time, you guys, you guys need to pause and figure out how to get more efficient and make sure that you have what you need on your end so that this is, this is a bit more seamless, even if that means at this point in time, folks have to wait. And I, and just on that wait point, I just had an individual who said he had been waiting for like six to seven weeks on his particular application. He said he had it professionally done, and, you know, it, it seems to me like those folks need to know this is gonna take a couple months to, you know, two to four months or six months. Like, we got to let people know, because otherwise they're, I'm sure they're sending you multiple emails. I mean, whatever that realistic timeframe is, we've got to, you know, we've got to let folks know, because what happened was you guys came out with those applications, I mean, those initial awards, great and all, but everybody else is expecting that theirs is gonna be processed in a similar timeframe. So, you know, I think that might have sort of worked against you guys a little bit, but I think you get my point. I feel for you guys, but we gotta figure this out.
Yeah, it's good points, Counselor. I think we had, you know, we've been discussing for a long time, and before the program rolled out, I think I was talking about this at length, that, you know, there's gonna be a series of these, you know, stoppages of the program where we're gonna have to pivot. We're gonna have to take in what we've done, and I probably said the word data about a thousand times, bored everybody to death. But, you know, you're gonna look at the data, you're gonna pause, you're gonna see what it is that you're doing right, what you're doing wrong, where the demand's really more than you thought it was, and how to make that, you know, more effective, and then who are you reaching, who are you not reaching? You know, all that, all that stuff. And, yeah, you're right. I think we had always ballparked it like six months or so, but, you know, I think we probably, you know, are in, you're close to that area now, you know, and that's, that's something that, that makes a lot of sense to have some kind of, like you're saying, revisions done that are more effective and efficient, and to sort of, you know, see where you, where we've done well and try to promote that area and kind of, you know, fix what hasn't gone as well as we wanted it to.
So you had ballparked six months for, from start to finish when somebody puts their application in?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Like, for the pause period, Counselor, I'm sorry. That's what I was, yeah, when I was talking about, I was like, oh, you know, six months into the program, we should be thinking about pressing that pause button and taking a look at it. Again, that's, that's, you know, something I totally agree with. I like that whole approach. It's something I've, again, I've probably bored people to death talking about it before we started, just saying, remember, we're gonna be pausing this at a certain point because we're not. Just saying, remember, we're gonna be pausing this at a certain point because we're not, you know, we're not sure where it goes at first and you don't want to just kind of. Like turn the fire hose on full blast and then realize that you didn't point it in the right direction. So.
Yeah, and even with the advertising, right? We're sitting here saying advertise, advertise, advertise. Well, if you do all of that advertising. And people are like, okay, let me get my act together, let me start submitting applications, and then they gotta, they gotta wait because you guys are inundated. You know, i- it's.
Yeah, you're right, counselor. And the expectation piece of it is a huge one. And you're right, we, we've been, you know, even as recently as, as uh this week, just sending out a, 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 a bunch of. Uh, you know, notices to people who have submitted stuff to let them know, you know, we've experienced some delays here. It's going to be a little bit longer than we thought. You know, this is more realistic timeframe. So you, and you're right, you know, people deserve to know that there's, there's, you know, there's information coming, but it's not as quick as we, we, we were originally hoping it would be. And, and, you know, we've been doing that and that's a message that, you know, I know Counselor Whitfield has said before and Counselor Hurst you as well. And it's, you know, a well-taken point.
Got it. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm all set.
Thank you, counselors, because when I talked to TJ, I was like, Wayfinders is a good job of setting expectation. When you put in one of their applications, you immediately get a, get an email. And it's going to be eight weeks before it's even assigned to somebody, so not even reviewed, assigned. So. They, they set that realistic expectation. And I did talk to TJ about that and he said it's something that you guys are definitely going to implement. Um, one thing that I did want to mention is, or, or ask, are there any more programs? Because every time I ask this and I say, are there any more city programs coming down the pipe that's going to take away from the ARPA funds? And then be like, no, 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 nothing in the pipeline. And then a week later, we get an email that says, oh, we, we're sending twelve million to this program. So as far as you know, Tom, are there any more programs coming down the pipe? That's going to take away from the ARPA funds that are left because my estimation, we're probably down under eighty million.
Yeah, it's, well, I don't know, like, the, 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 like, down eighty, you know, down to eighty millions, I don't know if I really look at it that way. I mean, it's not like it's money that's. Evaporated into the wind, you know, it's money that's going to do something, you know.
Gone, it's spent, and a lot of it didn't go to the community. If you look at the, where the majority went, it hasn't been the community applications. That's what. Around five hundred thousand out of the millions that are gone. So to me, that's gone.
I think the twelve million is, I think twelve million is all intended for community council. I mean, again, talk to, to Echo Dev because they're the ones running that show, but I. My understanding is that's supposed to be a community program, so, um, I don't know. We'll have to see how that money gets spent.
I'm hoping it works out like that.
Me too, me too. I was going to say.
I'm going to tell you why, just like CPA, right? CPA is supposed to be community programs. A lot of it goes to Parks Department and other city programs that, you know, it benefits. The community overall, but it's still Park Department um objectives or initiatives that they want to get done. And so when I say gone, I mean it in that sense, like, I'm hoping that the ARPA funds go to the households and the small businesses. And the new businesses more than it goes to completing city projects. That's why we have free cash. MGM money and some of these other things. This, this funding should go specifically to the businesses and folks in the community that was disproportionately impacted. By COVID nineteen. And so that's, that's the example that I'm giving you, like the fifteen million is still going to go back to the community in some way. But the, the funding itself, the monetary resource or the monetary benefit. Is going to go to some, some organization that may build um or redevelop a historic property. To me. The benefit is, the monetary benefit is going to whoever that contractor is.
Yeah, there's multiple factors involved in all of that. And it's, it's, you know, I think it's um monetary benefit is realized by many. Uh, uh, for a project that's large enough in an area that has economic uh impacts, you know, so.
It should be.
Again, I, I'm not the, I am certainly not the, um, you know, the Echo Dev representative, so I'll just defer to that office.
So, so if there are only two of us, and I know you've got a five thirty, Counsel Whitfield, if I could just add on to that, Tom, as.
I'm not quite there yet, Counselor, too. I, I don't know how you're making. Stuck in traffic.
Okay, um.
I'm stuck. I can't seem to get across town right now, yeah.
Um, if you're, there's, it's only us two on right now, Counsel Whitfield. Um, but, but if you're at the table, Tom. Uh, if you can make sure that folks are thinking about, especially that fifteen million that Counselor Whitfield is referring to. Uh, that folks are looking at it from an, from an equity lens and making sure that those individuals were disproportionately impacted. Benefit as much as they can. And so even if we're going to invest in the communities, which of course that makes the funding. Legit and, and sort of like a legit use, those that have been disproportionately impacted. Uh, but if we could also think about more ways to leverage that funding so that those individual. Those individuals in that community benefit, whether it's jobs, um, or some sort of the job requirement, whether it's uh. Um, contractors or uh, you know, I don't know, but they, I'm, I'm sure if we look at it from that lens and we want it to. You know, we want to leverage it a, a little bit so that just the individual developer is not getting the money and able to. You know, run off with it and, and kind of do with it what they, what they please. Um, you know, there might be ways in which the actual community itself can benefit. On top of uh the neighborhood itself, I guess, the actual community members, if that makes.
Yeah, yeah, counselor, it's a, it's a very good idea. And I think a lot of, you know, the discussions when, when ARPA was involved in, in, in any funding. For, for that type of program was that it would be going towards those disproportionately impacted communities and that we would be looking to set some benchmarks. If there are projects that are projects under, within our control in that fund. That we would look to have, you know, benchmarks within, you know, the, the community for hiring, like, just think similar to what you're discussing. I think that's all something that's on the radar. I know that those conversations are things that have been discussed. So, I, you know, to the extent that I'm at the table, I am very, very vocal and. And, and I think you've, you know, heard me discuss this a number of times. I read that legislation top to bottom and I realized what it's intended to you to do. And, you know, we're trying to, you know, make sure that the funds get used to have the greatest impact for the people who are the most disproportionately impacted.
Gotta make sure you're at the table, Attorney Moore.
Whatever I'm invited, whatever I'm invited.
I'm got to make sure you or somebody from the community, the communities that are impacted are at the table. Well, having all white men at the table isn't going to do it for me. Um, no women, no people of color. Um, that, mm-mm, mm-mm. You, it has to be an equitable process all, all the way around. So the decision-making, the ideas, everything generated has to be on level playing field. So I don't know how much you can lobby for that, but I'm going to keep saying it, um, you know. And I, and I know that some of the projects that you're talking about, Tom, it, it is benefiting the community. I'm talking about monetarily. We want to build generational wealth just like everybody else. And so we need to have the same opportunities to do that. As everybody else and that historically in America, in the nation, has not been the case, especially for black people. So when I'm talking about that, I know that there's going to be benefits for all communities. But I'm talking about monetary benefit. So I just want to be clear on, on what I was, I'm saying.
No, it's clear, counselor.
Mm-hmm. I don't have any more questions.
I do not. Let, 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 let Tom go.
No, because it's not, it's not the message for Tom, really. It's not the message for Tom. It's Tom's fair.
We know.
It, but you can still deliver it. It's still recorded.
It's good to have you, Tom. It's good to see you. I, I, I forget this is being recorded. But, um, you know, I want you at the table, Attorney Moore. That's all I can say. You.
Yeah.
Um, and if not you, uh, or, or if in addition to you, someone from the community, that would be amazing. But I need you at the table, so you let them know I said that.
I appreciate the kind words, counselors, as always. As always, I'm going to try to park my car quickly and run into this building.
There you go.
Take care of it.
Take it easy, you guys be good.